Good evening, everyone. I am calling our meeting to order at 7:00 PM. Welcome to the Arcadia Unified School District Board of Education Meeting. Today is September 23rd, 2025. This meeting is being recorded and livestreamed on YouTube and can be accessed at boardmeeting.ausd.net. Role call this evening, our board members are all present and Dr. Harishu is representing us at a conference.
That's HR conference.
Thank you. Mrs. Vargo, would you lead us in the pledge this evening?
Yes.
Thank you. Okay, place your right hand over your heart. Ready, begin. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to republic where riches stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. And Mrs. Vargo, you have inspiration this evening?
Yes, I do have an inspiration. Actually wrote one this time. So this past weekend, I had the opportunity to attend the Arcadia Performing Arts Foundation Gala with Dr. Van Azdal, Mrs. Chavez, Mrs. Yee, and Mr. Chung. The headlining group was the R&amp;B Quartet All For One. They were everything I expected from a Grammy-winning group. They were seasoned performers with an undeniable talent. But what truly impressed me was something a little bit quieter. During the high school students' performance, they paused from taking pictures to sit down and watch. They were fully present and fully respectful. They didn't see themselves as above it. They saw our students as fellow artists and gave them the attention and appreciation they deserved. In a time when it often feels like we need to speak forcefully to be heard, that moment reminded me of the quiet power of respect. Not just for those who agree with us or share our stage, but for anyone who shows up with sincerity and effort. Respect doesn't have to be loud. Sometimes it's simply giving someone your full attention and listening with genuine care. It's a small act, but one that can go a long way in building the kind of community we all want to be a part of.
Thank you. All right, we need a motion to approve tonight's agenda.
I'm looking to approve tonight's agenda?
Thank you. Do we have a second?
A second.
All right. Motion was made by Mr. Eng and signed into by Mrs. Yee. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Great, motion carries. And Ms. Lynn, we're ready for your student report.
Hi, everyone. My name is Kailene Lynn and I am the student representative to the board.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Iris Lueng and I'm the current junior class president.
Good evening. My name is Thomas Lee. I am the current sophomore vice president.
And this is the Board of Education report for September 23rd, 2025. The freshman council has now been elected to office and was announced on September 10th along with homecoming royalty. ASB is holding its first fundraiser of the year, matcha made in heaven. All ASB members will begin selling orders of matcha, strawberry matcha, oolong milk tea with boba, and oolong tea. Last week, the Homecoming Spirit Week also took place. For Monday, students dressed up as their "hear me out," which is a character they like. Tuesday was Together Tuesday. Students dressed as pairs. The next day was wannabe Wednesday. Both teachers and students swapped styles for a day. Students dressed as teachers and vice versa. The Thursday before homecoming is Spirit Thursday. Students were encouraged to show up in their school spirit. That same day, the homecoming football game also took place. Homecoming royalty was introduced during halftime.
Clubs Day will be held this Friday, September 26th. Link Crew hosted their annual Homecoming Tailgate on Thursday, September 18th. Students enjoyed Chano's Tacos, 626 Ice Cream, face painting, field games, and a variety of other fun activities, all in the spirit of homecoming. Band Color Garden Orchidist recently took the stage during the all-school Homecoming Assembly on September 18th. Girls volleyball has come out on top against Muir, Oak Hills, Don Lugo, Hoover, and Pasadena without losing a single set point throughout any of these games. Boys water polo has also come out on top against Polytechnic, Sonora, Roosevelt, and Glendora High with game scores of nine to six, thirteen to seven, seventeen to eleven, and ten to eight respectively.
The annual Homecoming Assembly took place on Thursday, September 18th. Junior Council is currently planning their first bonding event for the class of 2027, tentatively set to place take on Thursday, October 9th after school. They plan to provide plastic pumpkins for juniors to paint, as well as some seasonal food items to eat. Sophomore Council is finishing up their preparations for their first-ever fundraiser at BJ's Restaurant for this school year. They have also just held their Prom Comm 2025 to 2026 informational meeting last last Thursday with interviews finished up today.
And that concludes our board report for September 23rd, 2025.
Thank you. All right, it doesn't look like we have any audience comments this evening. So we will jump right into our action items. Dr. Van Azdal, I believe you're going to be introducing our first topic, which is our Board Governance Handbook.
Yeah, so this was a document that's been in the works for a couple of years that we first rolled out last year. And basically, we learned something a hard way during the pandemic. And that is, we were really good at training onboarding and our board members training each other as they come on just by attending events, you know, talking with each other, meeting. And then during the pandemic, something happened. We weren't allowed to meet anymore. And all of a sudden, we had two new board members that came on. And a lot of the work that we do and the roles weren't memorialized in a documentation that you could say, here, you know, read this, this is what we do. So that started the process of just really taking a good look at what we do, the roles of board members, the roles of superintendent, how we govern, and how we follow the governance of the state of California, and just putting that into a document in order for us as a governing board, for you all and for the superintendent and the board, to constantly use as a template and point to to help guide us, but also, as importantly, is onboarding new board members as they come on. So we did create a governance, a board governance handbook. And our agreement at the time was that we would bring it back annually because it is a living document and things change. And we want to add to it, take away if things aren't relevant anymore. And so in that likeness, we put it on the board agenda for tonight to just take a look at and give the board an opportunity to comment on it. Is it still relevant and still serving your needs?
Great. Let's start with a motion and then we'll have comment. I need a motion for the Board Governance Handbook adoption again this year. I move to adopt or re-adopt the Board Governance Handbook. Thank you, Mrs. Vargo. And a second?
Second.
All right, thank you, Mr. Eng. Would anybody like to comment or share their thoughts upon review of the document?
Kind of a continuation of what Dr. Van Azdal mentioned. I've always appreciated how our board, past and present, has just done the right thing. And we sort of intuitively, instinctively understand what our purpose is, you know, the fact that we have a role to represent our community and also our students. And but now I think it's important to really just carefully outline what it means to be on this board. I've been asked many times, what does a school board do? And I think it's a good time now to actually put it out on paper so that we can actually understand what that is.
Anybody else?
Yeah, I actually, I mean Raymond and I came on when there wasn't a handbook and it would have definitely been very helpful when we onboarded during the pandemic. But I do appreciate that we're bringing it up yearly and reviewing it yearly. I think that's important that just because our board does change, things do change. And the fact that it's a living document, it just ensures that we continue to have the appropriate, you know, just agreement on how we want to conduct ourselves. And it kind of goes back to what John, Ms. Vargo, talked about in her inspiration, is the respect. And I think that's so important. And I think this document helps us continue to be respectful of each other despite whether or not we have different opinions or different outlooks on things. At the end of the day, we are here to make sure that we do what's best for our students. And so I think this handbook is something that will help us continue to do so.
Thank you, Mrs. Yee. Sorry, Mrs. Vargo.
Sure. So as the newest board member, it was very useful for me to have that. I was also, it wasn't set in stone. I mean, it was still active. You were still working on it. But it was something that I could look at before coming on, so I appreciated that. A lot of people may not know, or I think people in this room, but maybe people watching, might not know that we actually all go through masters in governance training through the California School Boards Association. And it's a, I think it's two full days now online, maybe more? No, forty hours, forty hours. Yes, it's more than two full days. Yes, it's a long, it's a long training. And we go through lots of different modules about things that we are going to need to know about coming onto the school board. And I think, and I mean, one of the things they recommend is that you have a school board handbook. So I think that that is, it's good that we're going along with best practices in putting one together. And then I think, you know, with the, there will be an election this coming year. I think that anybody who decides that they want to run in this election should be familiar with it and have taken the time to understand how we currently operate. It doesn't mean that's how we have to operate forever, but having a knowledge of what you're stepping into is super important in terms of being successful. So I think it's great for us to have that, something that we can point to when people come and talk to us, just like Mr. Eng said, just like Mr. Eng said. Something we can point to when people ask us, what do we do and how do we handle things? And of course, there's the board policies and the, but this is, this is kind of how we interact with each other and the district. So I think I really appreciate having it and I agree with you, Mrs. Yee, that revisiting it every year both reminds, both gives us a chance to give input and then also reminds us of what's in it.
I agree with everyone. I think it's, I mean, we've operated as this board, as well as prior board before Mrs. Vargo came on, really well. Felt like we all shared the same values. We had the same ultimate mission and that really made us work as a very effective team. And nothing's changed with Jen on at all. It's been great having you on. One kind of question, and I probably should have mentioned this when this was brought to us a couple of weeks ago. But Madam President, I don't know, can we still make changes, like little changes to, or Dr. Van Azdal?
I can answer that. We did agree at the time, if you remember, that it would be a living document.
Right.
And so, well, we viewed it as being fluid. We would officially review it once a year, but we were willing to make changes.
Okay.
Like between adoptions, is that your question?
Well, actually, like right now, tonight.
Yeah.
Okay. So I just, just a couple of things because I've been reflecting. Mr. Eng brought up the issues across the proverbial street. And I don't foresee any of that happening here, especially with this board. But I was wondering if we should kind of memorialize things like Robert Rules of Order or whatever parliamentary procedure. I don't know if we have that in our bylaws. I'm not quite sure if that's something we currently have adopted or we need to.
We use quite a few of them, but I don't know if it's written down. And I don't think it's written in the handbook. I think, would you be more comfortable facing, like, sharing that as a baseline meeting behavior? As we follow Robert's rules?
Yeah, something like that. Yeah, I don't know if that would be. Yeah, I don't know if that would be more appropriate in the handbook or a bylaw or one of our board regulations, I don't know.
Is that, do they, is Robert's Rules of Order covered in the governance courses? Or is it just referred to?
That's specific.
Yeah, they don't really go into it now.
I didn't know if that was a part of the state model that they give.
Yeah, I'm just not sure if, I don't, we've done really well, but in case at some point in the future, in a future board where they need that structure, it might be appropriate to adopt it now if we need to. But again, maybe that's something we can research, where would be the most appropriate.
I'll take a look at the handbook, also find a acceptable model for Robert's Rules. And it is, Robert's Rules are the protocols that we've been using since I've been in the district.
Ever, yeah.
So, yeah, I think that would be appropriate. I mean, just look at where the most appropriate place to insert it into the handbook, and then I'll bring it back to you.
And then we can take a look at it as a group. I think that makes sense.
The other thing kind of related is to Robert's Rules of Order is it's very prescriptive in terms of you need a majority vote, three versus two or more to pass a resolution or adopt a resolution or a motion. However, I, as I was kind of doing some research on Robert's Rules of Order, there's this model called consensus decision-making, which reminded me a lot of interest-based bargaining in terms of rather than have a kind of one side wins, one side loses, it's also kind of a leader in me, seek out a win-win, where it's more of a fluid discussion, and you try to form a consensus rather, and try to get everyone to be, agree with some form of the motion that they're being willing to live with, right? Maybe not everyone's happy, but near unanimity in terms of supporting the motion. And I don't, we don't have to necessarily memorialize that, like, within Robert's Rules of Order, but maybe somewhere in the handbook that we do seek concession, I'm sorry, consensus decision-making as much as possible, because I feel like we do, like, we don't, when we have discussions, we don't really, we don't fight, right? We discuss and we collaborate.
We do, and I'd like to respond too, as I think there is part of the handbook where it talks about unity of purpose as a board, and you're right, we have sort of done that instinctually where we get everyone's input, we get a lot of reading the facts, best practices, maybe look at things, and that just seems to be how we operate, and there is so much in the handbook about, you know, roles and who's responsible for what, but maybe we can talk more about the importance of that and the time allotted to discuss and marinate, maybe, I don't know, in a respectful way. Yeah, it's.
Yeah.
Again, we've been fortunate that folks who have served on this board have been very, very professional in this capacity for a long time. And so we haven't had to put guardrails around a lot of things because everyone just knew that's what was appropriate and how we function, but since we are trying to create a document that this is the expectation, so maybe we look into that a little bit more too.
Absolutely, absolutely. It does reflect who we are and the practice we've done, so just trying to find the right language that.
That works, and maybe it does reflect some of the things that we are teaching, like win-win and the principles of IBB. The thing I really, that really resonates with me about that handbook is it starts with our values, and we revisit those all the time and talk about them as we make decisions. And that, quite frankly, a lot of our values lead to that type of collaboration. Collaboration is a value, but that, that working together to build consensus and things where, like you said, not everyone's always a hundred percent convinced, but you can get behind the why.
Right.
So anybody, yeah. Just on that, you know, I hadn't thought about that before. I do wonder, and this is something that I guess Dr. Benazdal will be looking into, how we could incorporate it. I do wonder if codifying that may make things unnecessarily rigid? And this is, I have not researched, this is just coming from my head. I feel like Robert's Rules of Order generally is there to manage large groups of, like larger groups of people, you know, like in Congress or whatever, like where you've got eighty or a hundred people all trying to get together and come to, come to an agreement. And when you have, when you adopt it at a smaller organization, I'm wondering if the cons may outweigh the pros. So I don't know, just food for thought. I'm not saying.
Yeah, Robert's Rules can become overly prescriptive, like we couldn't change a motion in mid-motion, or, and I know sometimes we do that, or we say, okay, or we're not going to, we'll bring it back, but we would then beholden to very exact wording about how to do it. So I think the idea about structure is a good one, and finding our way around that appropriately will be important. Yeah, good point, Jen.
And even the consensus part, like, we're not always going to be able to reach a bylaw consensus, like, so, but I think to say, like, we'll try, at least we'll try.
Well, and I think for, for one thing about this board that is, and every board I've served with over the nine years, everyone looks at the district as a whole, and everyone makes decisions based on what is best for the district at a whole. It does not get parochial, and I think that is one of the reasons that the board has worked so well, so. But again, it does, it all comes back to, do we, do we live the values that we profess to have, and I think we do.
Yeah, I mean, I totally understand where you're coming from with the way things are these days, but I tend to try, it scares me a little when you put such rigid things into, into print because it can sometimes go against what you want. But I do agree with Lee that, and Ms. Chavez, that, you know, starting with our values and that sort of leads us down the right path. So, yeah, maybe there's a way to put some guardrails on there, but maybe not a full.
Yeah, Robert Rules is like two hundred pages. I don't think it's really two hundred pages.
Yeah, yeah, and we do follow a lot of Robert's Rules already, so that's not a, but, yeah, so I think Dr. Benazdal can look into it, that would be great, and.
And it's, you know, we're not on a time, we're constrained, so I can do a little research, play with where we could best insert.
We can accordion it.
Bring it back, and we can look at it, talk more.
All right.
Thanks for the input.
Yeah.
So right now, we do have a motion to adopt it in its current form, knowing that we're going to take a look at it. Can I get a vote on this item? And all members in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, terrific, and thanks, Dr. Benazdal, for kind of following up on that.
Thank you.
Well, I appreciate the comment, though, Mr. Chung. Yeah.
And I really appreciated your inspiration and how it reflects. The next item on our agenda is the public hearing in action for resolution number twenty-five, twenty-six oh eight, sufficiency of instructional materials. Dr. Forsy?
This is a public hearing regarding the Williams Law and sufficiency of materials, and we can open that hearing. I'm very confident in our standing right now as a district.
So with that, I open the public hearing regarding the resolution on sufficiency of instructional materials. Okay, hearing no comment. I will close the public hearing. And now that the public hearing is closed, we move on. All right, so, and I understand that we had a Williams audit recently.
We did at one of our school sites. We had a materials audit. It was not triggered by anything, it's a random.
Yeah, just the random.
And it was, Dr. Benazdal received a very nice, I would say cordial and personalized email about the experience the auditors had at Balden Stocker Elementary School. So it was a, I wouldn't say it's a fun experience, but it's, we learned, and so if one of our sites ever is selected to go through that again, we've learned a lot, and we passed with flying colors, and the auditors had a lot of, had a great experience on our campus. So I think it was a, to quote Mr. Chung, it was a win-win.
Awesome. All right, so we need a motion to adopt that resolution twenty-five, twenty-six oh eight.
I'm going to adopt resolution number twenty-five, twenty-six oh eight, sufficiency of instructional materials.
Thank you, Mr. Chung, do we have a second?
Second.
All right, the motion was made by Mr. Chung, seconded by Mr. Eng. Any more comments on that one? All right, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
And any opposed? Great, motion carries. All right, brings us to resolution number twenty-five, twenty-six ten, the authorization to assign elementary and secondary teachers to teach subject or subjects not listed on teaching credentials under board resolution during the twenty-five, twenty-six school year and during the twenty-six summer school. And Dr. Benazdal, I believe you'll be addressing that since Dr. Her issue is.
Yes, thank you, Madam President. Yes, on behalf of Dr. Her issue, this is an annual resolution that is required to keep the district credentially compliant. The teachers listed on this item are fully eligible and qualified to teach in the subjects areas listed on the personnel action report.
Thank you. I need a motion for this item.
I'm going to approve resolution number twenty-five, twenty-six ten, authorization to assign elementary and secondary schools to teach subjects or subject not listed on teaching credentials under board resolution.
Thank you, Mr. Eng, do we have a second?
I'll second.
Oh, all right, I got Mrs. Yee first, thanks, Mrs. Vargo. I'd just like to say, you know, it's very transparent. Anyone can see that report attached to the agenda to see what people are teaching and why. I think it's really important to publicly state that our teachers are absolutely qualified to be teaching what they're teaching, whether it is due to what they studied in college, their experiences on our campus, that they're jumping in to help, that they're coaching a sport, and yet they are a social studies teacher, that kind of thing. Because I think often, there's a public perception that sometimes in public schools, people make do with whoever they can find, and that is not the case in Arcadia at all. And so I just wanted to say that really clearly before we vote on this item. And so all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, motion carries. And we do not have any items removed from our consent agenda, so we are at information items, and I'm very excited for our facilities update.
Good evening.
Hey, Mr. Vargas, thanks for being here after your long day.
It has been a long day. I've completed my civic duty. In case you didn't understand what that meant, I was at jury duty, so. Okay. So this is a September facilities construction update essentially, and I'll start off with the big project at Arcadia High School doing the locker room modernizations. So you can see, we have hit some unforeseen conditions of damaged wood frames, damaged roof substrates that are causing some slowing down. I won't say delays yet because that's not something that has been mentioned, but essentially it's requiring us to tear off the roof and all the substrate, all the plywood, things of that nature, redo some of the drainage that was internal that caused some of this damage that we see. So that's going to require DSA essentially to review, so that adds on time in terms of reviewing and getting the plans approved in terms of how we can properly fix it. Fortunately, DSA is working with us. The DSA regional manager has come out to the field and has looked at it, has given us suggestions on how he wants to see it, and he's the one essentially that has the final authority on the structural review, so that really helps. So it's a matter of having that confidence to move forward and waiting for DSA to officially stamp it, so that's really helping us a lot. We are also working on the locker color selections. Of course, they're going to stick with the basic same colors that we had before, so that's very easy. And then they're doing the framing for the new doors. As you can see, next to Building J, you're going to have the new coaches' offices entry. We'll have these doors up on top, that picture, that's where the new offices are for the coaches, and they have overhangs as required for any doors that exit to the outside. We also have the offices underway, and you can see on the bottom right, framing that's going in for the team rooms. Essentially, that's where the rooms are going to be for the teams to be able to have different sports and gather together as individual sport teams. And then just more framing on the bottom left picture of some removal of some stickouts that were in the way essentially, pop-outs of the building that are no longer needed or essential and essentially would be in the pathway, so we removed it to make it easier and not have to worry about people running into those things. Cosmetic essentially. The big one, Hugo Reed Park, we're finally done. We have the notice of completion on the agenda today, and the park, the fencing is a hundred percent complete. We have worked with the city of Arcadia, we appreciate their collaboration. We have placed locks on the maintenance gate that they're going to be using to drive in and out of, so that's taken care of. We've keyed it to our keys and, you know, shared it with the city as well, just in case. But essentially, this will allow the staff to be able to close that park off, and the playground will be secured both sides from Deanza and on, let's have it straight, Mitchell London, Mitchell London. So very excited that this is finally completed there. The last final touch is some softening of the wrought iron fence that'll be done with some shrubs installed by the city of Arcadia, and they're working, we're going to be working with them to get that installed. Okay, so I believe we had discussed previously some damaged portable wood foundations that had to be replaced because the portables at Longview are old, typical of all the portables are at least twenty-five plus years. So what we're doing is we're bringing this one up to the front of the line as far as being replaced or replacing all the portables there. Currently, there are eight portable classrooms. Our plan is to remove those portable classrooms and bring in, essentially build a two-story building similar to Holly Avenue that'll give us ten classrooms, two of those which are larger, we'll call them flex spaces, and allows for different programs to go in there, music, art, whatever it is, but it's just flexible for anybody to use. It's larger than your typical classroom, so that gives people a little bit more room to do extracurricular activities essentially. The location that we are going to be showing here is similar to what was proposed in the master plan. Obviously, Longview doesn't have that many places to consider a new building, but this is essentially where we decided or landed on placing the building. We do have two options for the building. One of them is with street parking, one one is without street parking. I think the one with street parking is going to win. There's always the need for more parking, especially at school sites. Again, this is all high-level concepts. We still have to share this with the school sites, talk to them, or the Longview, make sure we get input from the teachers, but a lot of this has come from the master plan and all the previous meetings that we have done. So we're very excited about this new building, new project that's going to be going in this way. Where the interim housing is going to land, we're still working on that. Maybe it'll be on the playground, on the asphalt, or maybe it'll be on the grass area, we're not sure. We're working on that, but essentially, the plan is to reuse the portables that are there as interim housing, move them to the side, get them occupied, and then start building this new building. We're still considering a modular building that allows us to expedite the construction of the process, similar to Holly Avenue, the construction of the Legos that we saw go up in the previous videos will allow us to install it in a fast and timely manner along with saving, there are some added savings to it. So had, as I had discussed, there's a total of ten classrooms and a right-of-school daycare in the bottom right. We have, on the second floor is on the left-hand side, you will have the fifth grade and fourth grade up on top. We like to have the bigger kids on the second floor just because it's easier for the. We like to have the bigger kids on the second floor just because it's easier for them to go up and down the stairs. We'll also have a workroom in that building, which is something that is needed in that area. And then on the bottom floor, we'll have a third grade classrooms is currently what they're designated as, and then the two flex spaces. You can see they are a little bit larger. So typically, the classrooms are what's called two floors. The flex spaces will be three floors essentially, so instead of being 24 by 40, it'll be 36 by 40. Just giving you more, again, more space for storage, whatever it is that we need to run different programs in there as things develop.
Is that a restroom on the end near the flex space? What is?
I believe so, yes. I believe we are going to be installing restrooms in this as required just because of the distance and the walking, being able to accommodate the teachers and sometimes the students.
And do we usually do both adult and student restrooms when we do that?
Typically, we do. Similar to Holly Avenue, we did boys and girls restrooms, and then we did some staff, single occupancy staff restrooms. I know the staff really appreciate that. And of course, an elevator. Always fun. Questions, no?
Do you want to talk about the existing right at school building?
Oh, so, let me see if I go back here. So currently, the existing right at school building is down here in the bottom left. I'm sure if you can see that, on the bottom left, there's a little square there. And that right at school building is essentially not DSA approved, but we don't use it for our students, it's used for daycare.
It's one of those old youth huts that were built many, many decades ago by community, community groups. And like Tony said, it's not DSA approved, so we can't use it during the day. And it's so, so our, our plan at this site and probably other sites as well is to, if it's, you know, like in the way that we would take those down and replace them with modern DSA approved buildings. And I just share that because I don't know if that is something that might be a concern in the community, you know, the Boy Scouts or the, what other group may have helped build those. Just want to be sure that we're all aware that that's our plan. It's, it's just not functional for us as a school, especially at a place like Longley Way where space is so precious.
I think the concern I hear when I'm out in the community is more that those facilities are brought up to date.
Yeah.
So I think that people will be pleased. And then like you mentioned, not only brought, those facilities brought up to date for before and after school, but then during the day, they can now also be utilized by our students.
And, and I don't know this for a fact, but to try and bring those up to date and get them DSA approved and code compliant, it's, it's probably not worth the cost.
Yeah, correct.
So wait, so just so I understand, the next picture, that at Longley Way, that right at school hut will stay, right? Did I misunderstand that?
Yeah, the hut will go.
If you go to the next slide.
But space will be built in to the building.
Yeah, and I, even at, even at this high conceptual level, I have questions about why we're putting a block of grass in the bottom left corner. That's a conversation for another day.
I'll give you a tree.
Okay.
Are, are there any groups that currently use that space, like on the weekends or anything like that?
Here, I'm not sure. I know at Highland Oaks, a local Boy Scout troop does use the, the youth hut or the right at school building. But, but again, I think sort of, we're making sure that we have space for, you know, our current after school program right at school to be able to, to have some space in that location. So they would still be able to reside somewhere. And of course, through our, what am I trying to say, our facilities request process, any group could, you know, request to use a classroom or the multipurpose room for the evening or weekend on our campuses. That's a whole separate process, so they're not limited to just that right at school building.
And last but not least, Technology Information Services, so we have been doing a lot, working with Greg and Mr. Guzanian, sorry, Mr. Guzanian and Mr. Anderson at the TIS Department. First of all, at the, at the high school, they came in and essentially, we discussed everything that needed to be updated. Again, when we designed the locker room modernization, the bomb wasn't really in the picture, so now it's the time to come in and do everything right in terms of TIS. One of the things they are doing is we're replacing the fiber. I believe replacing fiber has been discussed several times and it's in the master plan as well. That is something that is needed. It's well over 20 years old, which is past the life expectancy. So the thought process is to try to do it wherever we can, as much as we can, and sometimes we're just going to have to do it district or the entire school at a time, depends. But essentially here, we're going to be moved and install a new, two new IDF's in the boys and girls locker rooms and the main fiber run that goes back to the MDF room, which is in the cafeteria building essentially. So that'll really bring everything up to par and up to standard. And then from the IDF's, you run the copper lines or the, the blue lines that you see, the data drops to the wireless access points, to the updated digital clocks that have public address systems and capabilities and things of that nature, so that everybody is up to par in terms of technology. The other thing we have been discussing as well is access controls against security is one of the top priorities in terms of the master plan. And the whole global, I guess, big picture is the access control. How we manage our keyless doors, our security cameras, all those things will have to come from an access control system. So it's not a decision that we're taking lightly and we've been testing and piloting several different systems, trying to come up with the best one, the best price, the one that's going to give us a bit more flexibility that doesn't tie us into licensing and things of that nature. Avigilon, Ubiquity are some of the ones that we have considered, but there's others that we're still working on to consider. But the, the thought process is that this main security software will be able to give us cameras, keyless entries as mentioned, facial recognition, some license plate recognition, hopefully at the gates. So it, it is something that we have been discussing and meeting on frequently, and I just want to make sure that the community knew that knows that it is on our forefront of something to get accomplished here soon. Questions?
With the security software that you're looking at, are you also looking at how the data is stored so that like facial recognition and stuff is not out there for people to hack into?
Yes.
Okay.
So obviously, it's, it's really interesting, the language around this, because obviously we're doing this for safety and at the same time, we need to make sure we're safe from the data we're collecting and it's stored safely. So we're looking at both of those things very closely, both as far as rules, laws, regulation, and the technical manner in which we're storing it. So that's certainly one of the considerations as well as we look at these systems. And again, we're going system by system, we're talking with these companies, had a really, really productive conversation with Mr. Barrios and his team, starting with like, what are our needs? We're going to make a list of those things, we're going to evaluate each one, including cybersecurity, safety, and the features will be implemented. So yeah, excellent question, it's certainly something we're looking at.
Hope this doesn't go to our, off, off the path here, but have staff or has anybody thought of or asked for like panic buttons and things like that? I know there are some districts in the country who like on their ID, they carry like something that they can press and it sends a panic message somewhere. Is that something that we need or something where we should look at or, I don't know, just ask me a question?
It's an excellent question. Mr. Barrios, I don't know if you recall kind of where that conversation went during the, the facilities planning meetings last year. I know a lot of schools are doing that. Those aren't necessarily conversations I've had directly as we've been going through this process, but I know it's part of a broader conversation that we could certainly explore.
Yeah, I'm sure there are pros and cons with that.
Yeah, that's exactly what I was going to say. I, I think it's part of a cost benefit analysis that we have to do. There's a lot of companies out there that will give you the whole list of features and it'll be expensive upfront and the, the, the main, the, the service cost will, will, can be very burdensome. And so, I mean, I think it's, it's part of the conversation and I know of one district around us that has done it. And, you know, I, I think, yeah, I mean, it's part of the conversation.
I'll, I'll also add, as we look at all these systems, one of the key things we're looking at is interoperability, not just with our current systems, but moving forward if we do choose to go a direction, could we tie it all together?
Yeah.
So even if we're not making a decision today, you know, we obviously don't want to rip a bunch of stuff out and have to redo it later. So we're looking at how these systems may connect if we were to go a different direction later on.
Yeah, it'd be great to have that flexibility, yeah. Thank you.
Okay, the other things I did want to show you is on our district website, I do have additional pictures of Hugo Reed Primary Park. Just different angles of the beautiful new wrought iron fence. The grass did get yellow because we did cut through some of the irrigation lines and we had to repair them and we had to work with getting them back up, so it'll come back green eventually. And then we also have Highland Oaks Kinder Playground, we're wrapping it up. The thing that we had to do towards, it's kind of, we had to work our way out just because of the accessibility to this playground, there's no real way to get a backhoe in there essentially or a bobcat. So, but in addition, we had to install a planter cedar wall to reinforce that retaining wall that's there because we dropped down the actual surface on the other side of the retaining wall in order to make everything level and compliant. So you'll see a little retain, little planter wall. The thought process is possibly the kindergarten kids can have their own kindergarten area, similar to Camino Groves. But it has been completed as far as asphalt being installed, so it's just a matter of, you see over here, the brick is still broken up, so it's just a matter of patching this up and working their way out so that they can finish this project. But it, the playground is still usable, it's just a portion of it, essentially the track is still off. So the kids will love it once the track comes on, they can run their tricycles around it.
Glad you were able to save that, that brick wall, or at least most of it.
Yeah, definitely, it has a lot of aesthetics to it, it's really nice. And that's basically it.
A lot happening.
Yes, ma'am.
I have a couple of questions. Over at Hugo Reed, how does the access work for the public in terms of during the off hours? And do you know, do we know, have we set the, 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 the times that we're going to have district access only and then public access?
Essentially, it's during school hours. So we do open them up so that's, parents can drop off their students either next to the playground or in the front or on the side. But when school starts, our custodians go around and lock all the gates on both sides of the fences. And then when school lets out, custodian again goes back out, opens it back up, leaves it open over the weekend, and essentially just comes back on Monday, locks it up.
Got it, so every day, every, every night it'll be opened up?
Yes.
And then it's open, I mean, it's.
The weekends too.
And technically, people aren't probably supposed to be there after like dark or something, are, are they? I don't know, I don't know what the city rules are on using.
Will they? They do have the tennis courts and I think those are lit up and the baseball that possibly has lights as well, so.
So there's light there, yeah. Okay. And then later on, is that something that we'll use electronic access for or gates will never be electronic access?
We do have electronic gates, but not here, this is too far. What we did is kind of foreseeing what we were going to be encountering here when it's closed is we installed an electronic gate and camera on the Deanza side and then also on the Mitchell Linda side. So both sides have electronic gates with, you know, buttons and cameras, so we can see who's there and allow them to come into the campus without having some, somebody having to go all the way down there and unlock the gate for them.
You know, I'm thinking back to when my kids were at Camino Grove and they installed the, the gates there, and sometimes I would come on the weekends as part of ASO or something like that, and the gates would be locked because something happened. Is there, and I don't know if, maybe you already instituted something like this, is there a way for whoever comes in case there's a, a failure somehow in that, in that, in that chain? Like a number that they would call or something like that?
Like call me if the gate is locked.
Yeah, like if, if it's between such and such hours, the gate should be unlocked. I don't know.
I think that possibly something would be.
I think it's tough too, because like we're responsible for, for part of the day and the city's responsible for, for it on the weekends or at night.
It would probably be a number to the organization they're with to use it, so like, I'll take ASO for instance, it would probably be whoever the, the ASO contact is who has the key, who has the access to that is who they would contact to get access.
But in this case, at Hugo, well, I guess we could just see if, if, if there are any, any situations like that, but I don't know, I'm just trying to think ahead of, of avoiding people being upset because of a mistake, you know, of a mistake that just happens.
For the weekend, it's like Arcadia American uses the field, so if they, if they have issues getting access, they, they'll, they'll usually call the city.
They know who to call. But what if you were a resident?
Right, I think Jen's like, I'm taking my kids to play at the park and it's Sunday morning and it's locked.
I mean, the city, the city's responsible for the weekend, right? So I would imagine they, they should call the city.
We could put a sign that has their phone number on there, I guess.
Public Works is, City Public Works is generally there 24/7, so they, they should be able to unlock it.
They do have a key, city does have a key.
My understanding is that we are supposed to unlock and lock, um, lock and unlock?
I think what we can also do is install a cane bolt that would lock it in the open position. You know, I think that, that would help so that doesn't happen in the future. That might be a possible solution.
Okay.
I'll talk to maintenance, see if that's something we can do.
Yeah, I, I think, you know, we're trying to, tell me if I'm wrong, but I think we're trying to be sensitive to the fact that it's something that the public has had really wide open access to and now it has changed and we want the public to have access to it when it makes sense outside of our school day.
Yes, good part, but yes, that's my point.
Alright, anything else? Thank you so much and thank you for being here.
Thank you.
Alright, Dr. Van Oostal, department updates.
Thank you, Madam President. This will serve as our updates since the last board meeting in all of our departments and I'm going to begin and it's because we just had our one school-wide, all, all district professional development day. And I'm very fortunate to have that day, I always wished we had more, but it's, it was an incredible day this past Friday. And I know we'll hear probably a little more about it, but I just want to say a lot of thank yous because it takes so many people to pull that day off and, and have it be a successful day as it was. I want to thank Dr. Tong for a lot of the overall logistic organization, including lunch, Ms. Ashworth, Nutritional Services Department and all of their support for the morning and lunch. High school custodian team for hosting the entire district at the high school and just keeping everything clean and supported. Mr. De Luca, his team at Arcadia Performing Arts Foundation, always welcoming and having the center ready to, to welcome the entire staff in the morning. Dr. Forsey, his Ed Services team, Dr. Mendoza, Dr. Dilman, Ms. Matera, the entire coaching team that I think all of them in some capacity were delivering some presentation or facilitating a session. And that's important because every time they're doing it, we're not paying an outside consultant to come in and it's building internal capacity. So it's always great to see our coaches up sharing with their colleagues, the principals, each of them identifying critical needs and collaborating at grade alike levels across the district. And again, any of the professional development we can do on, on that student free day is a day that we don't have to pull teachers out of classrooms on a regular school day and pay subs. So, you know, just critical to really get some of that important work done. Mr. Guzanian, the tech department for all of their support throughout the day, especially keeping wifi going with so many people in one place. Mr. Barrios and his team for the maintenance, custodians, transportation, it wasn't just teachers having professional development, but all of our staff having appropriate sessions for them. Derek might share some of that. I want to thank our union leadership. I had an opportunity to pull them on stage at the beginning. You know, we talk a lot about interest-based bargaining and that takes leaders at each of these organizations and management to step up in their willingness to lead and believe in the, in interest-based bargaining. And so it was wonderful to see them get up and be recognized. And so it was wonderful to see them get up and be recognized in front of their folks. And then our office assistants, um, throughout the district, uh, just supporting with check-in and making sure the day ran smooth. So just a lot of thank yous, but it was a, a very successful day. And, uh, appreciate, uh, the board's support, um, for us having a professional development day that, that we can do that, so. With that, we'll start going around, we'll start with Business Services, Mr. Estle.
Thank you, and then just to follow up on that, my one update is related to the Professional Development Day and our classified employees. Um, for those employees that are not twelve-month, year-round employees, that's actually a non-work day. Uh, but fortunately, and I just checked, uh, six years ago, the state of California gave us one-time funds for classified employee professional development. And so we've been using those funds for six years now, offering, uh, our, our non-year-round classified employees the opportunity to come in here, Dr. Van Oostal in the morning or with a, you know, keynote speaker and then to also, uh, attend training sessions that are specific to their departments. And so in Nutrition Services, I know they had about forty-five employees, uh, attend training after the keynote session. Uh, they brought in a, a really well-regarded consultant and she did a lot of, uh, cooking demonstrations. And I know that our, our Nutrition Services Director Kathleen Ashworth really appreciates this day because it's the only time, the only day in the entire year that her entire staff gets to get together. She has regular meetings with managers, but all of the staff at the sites, this is the one time they're all together. So it's been really nice that we can offer that to them. Uh, Transportation also does, um, training that day. I know in the past, they've actually gone up to the mountains and done, uh, mountain driving training, like that's, I think, some sort of, sort of occasion that they need. In looking at their agenda this year, they had sessions on accidents, probably avoiding accidents. Uh, and then also Transportation for our students with IEPs. And so I know that, um, Gabriel Santos and Kathleen Ashworth, they all really appreciate this opportunity to provide this additional training. And, you know, again, with the state funds providing, uh, small stipends just really helps our classified employees to attend and feel a part of the district and get to experience the whole day.
Thank you, we'll move on to Educational Services, Dr. Forsen.
All right, thank you. Uh, from Dr. Dillman, the middle school coaches led an engaging professional development for all three of our middle schools in tier-two instructional strategies to use data in support of students needing extra support. The high school used the afternoon of the Professional Development Day to collaborate within departments, refine and realign their instructional pacing. From Ms. Matera, uh, very positive feedback from our elementary staff on Friday's Professional Development Day and I will share some more data on that at the end. Um, our TK worked with our, uh, UPK Consultants, which is Universal, uh, Pre-Kindergarten Consultants on age-appropriate environment and learning, and that's something we've been doing really since August, July or August, when we started ordering furniture and bringing it in, um, so working with them for quite some time now. And, uh, our K-two did our Amplify Training, that's the reading screener, that is new, um, law this year. So getting more training on that and when we talk about cost savings, that's an area that we, we don't have a choice, we have to. But doing it on a Professional Development Day as opposed to getting subs and pulling teachers out of classrooms, um, is a way in which we're able to save some money in, in using this day in this way. Uh, grades three through five did ELD Strategy Professional Development and that was started with, um, Teresa Oakland and her sister leading a lesson in German. And kind of an anticipatory set of your teachers here and you have EL students in your classrooms, you're gonna get to experience what's that, what that is like and also how much you actually are able to communicate and understand when certain strategies are used in the classroom. So, uh, a lot of good feedback on that. From Mr. Anderson, schools are implementing targeted interventions for students. We have a couple of pilot programs that are underway and we look forward to monitoring the data and evaluating the program's benefits. School site councils are meeting, reviewing plans for achievement and preparing to work on their school safety plans, which will come to you for your approval soon in the coming months. From Dr. Mendoza, additional notifications were sent out to our English learner families regarding students who may be at risk for being long-term English learners. That traditionally has been sent through the mail, um, in an envelope. And we have, uh, decided to do that, but also to follow up with emails and continuous communication. And what we found is that that has opened communication back and forth. And so we're able to, to learn more about the students and the families and maybe the situation and, uh, better help the student, the family, um, who's interested in maybe getting out of that long-term, um, English learner, uh, area. Again, I think we went, uh, last month, we talked a little bit about that and we have a number of our long-term EL students who it's just about passing, passing that test. But they're doing well in school, they're doing well in high school and they're actually going to college, but they're still at, in, in EL-three, um, long-term English learner because they haven't, you know, scored a certain level on the, the English learner assessment. So it's not hurting them, they're going to college, many of them getting scholarships, but it is something that we would like for them to know that it, it helps all of us if you can, you know, take that test, get it, get done and get off of that, uh, determ- that determination. So working on deeper communication with parents around that. Many thanks to Kim Labilla and our elementary ELD teachers for their presentation on EL strategies for our grades three through five teachers on Staff Development Day. So after the German, uh, lesson, um, our own English learner teachers, uh, presented, uh, to our regular classroom teachers about EL strategies. And so again, it's, it's teacher, our own teachers working with our staff, doing professional development, which is wonderful to see because, you know, referencing leader in me, we want our teachers to be leaders and be seen as being leading in areas that they're highly proficient in. And we don't have to bring in an expert to do that, that, uh, teaching and learning for us, so very excited about that. And last but not least, from Dr. Tong, our absence recovery data thus far. Elementary is completing, um, about sixty-six and a half percent of absences are being recovered. Um, secondary, not quite as high, about forty-six percent of absences recovered for a district average of fifty-five percent. And to date, uh, tomorrow will be our sixth week of school. And we've recovered a hundred and thirty-seven, six-hundred-and-ninety thousand dollars, um, thus far. So excited about that. And the data, uh, the macro data, uh, survey data coming back from our Staff Development Day. Um, three main questions, overall satisfaction with presentations. Um, over ninety-five percent were either very satisfied or satisfied. Relevance of presentations, um, over ninety-six percent were either very satisfied or satisfied. And the responses, uh, the vast majority were very satisfied with a smaller portion satisfied, so it, it seemed a very positive day. And then, uh, the last question was time allocation feedback, was the pacing of the day, did that feel right? And over ninety-five percent, um, were satisfied on that. So thank you again, Dr. Van Oostal, for doing the keynote and bringing your, your warmth and your humor, um, and your relevance, uh, to the morning. It really kicked it off the right way, so thank you. And that's my report.
All right, thank you. We'll move now to Technology and Innovation, Mr. Gazanian.
Thank you, Dr. Van Oostal. I was gonna kick it off by talking about construction, but I think we covered most of that. Uh, but I do want to take a moment just to thank, uh, Mr. Barrios, uh, Mr. Vergara and Ms. Williams, uh, for just the incredible collaboration we've been engaging in, in kicking off these construction projects, especially the Boys and Girls Locker Room. I remember the first projects of the last bond and it is always an adventure to learn what it is you don't know and build those lines of communication and collaboration. Uh, we all work really well together in Arcadia, but the scale of these projects is just something we don't necessarily do on a day-to-day basis. And I can tell you, uh, the way we've worked together, it's a really good sign for how this bond is going to go. Uh, they've been so, uh, communicative, we're calibrating how often to meet, uh, and how to work on these projects together. It's been just absolutely wonderful, uh, getting to work with them on that. So we'll certainly keep you up to date on that. Also want to take a moment, uh, on those projects to thank, uh, Mr. Brian Anderson, who's hiding in the back here. Uh, I remember a day last week where he went from, uh, tracing fiber optic cables through, uh, ceilings, down into vaults in the floor, looking at old drawings, drawing up new architectural plans, jumping over to cybersecurity research and investigation, writing up, uh, some documents, emailing, and that was all before nine AM. So, uh, it's a busy time of year, so huge thanks, uh, to, uh, Mr. Anderson for that. Uh, really excited to share, uh, we are up and running completely on our new elementary report card system. I know we've been phasing in the last few years, uh, but huge thanks, uh, to Dr. Forsy and his team for collaborating around that. Uh, it was a legacy system we were running before, uh, over ten years old. Uh, and the shift allows us to be even more secure with the data, uh, to have it more easily accessible and fully integrated with our PowerSchool system. So that's been going very smoothly. Uh, we're doing a lot of server updates right now. Uh, we've talked a lot about, uh, the last security update for, uh, Windows ten going out on October fourteenth. Uh, some of our servers are on the same boat, I mean, we need to upgrade all these systems to make sure that they are secure. Uh, so we're gonna be continuing to do our internal upgrades as well as working with staff who are still running older machines, running Windows ten, uh, to make sure everyone is running the system that is up to date and secure moving forward, um, after those security updates expire. So we'll be sharing more details about that later, uh, but we're heading towards, uh, that end of support from Microsoft. Finally, I just want to take a moment to thank, uh, our TIS staff. We absolutely love, um, our Professional Development Day and as alluded to earlier, there's a lot of work to be done to make sure everything's running, uh, correctly on that day. So our team was out there in full force, just very appreciative, uh, for them, uh, spending the time to do that. That concludes my report.
All right, thank you, I just want to add, cause it's connected to our earlier conversation, that something that, I know Mr. Gazanian and Mr. Barrios are speaking a lot about is, is something that we have to be very conscious of and that is, um, everything operates on a subscription now. And, you know, so take just the example we were talking about in gates and, and the last facilities bond, security is gates and locks, right? And it, you can use one-time money to build the gate, build the fence and you get a, you get a key or multiple keys and you're done. Now, you know, with everything being run by software behind the scenes, even our energy is, you know, run on software. Every company operates on subscriptions, so, uh, our one-time money that's comes out of the bond can build this stuff. And yet we have to budget, you know, we have to be careful of how much, you know, ongoing cost we take on to the ongoing budget, uh, moving forward. And so that's just, that's how the world works now, it is what it is. Um, although we are, you know, looking at opportunities, things that, technology that might not utilize, uh, subscriptions, uh, seeing if that will work for us. So, but thank you for all that work and continuing to be thoughtful, uh, as we move forward, so. Uh, Communications, Ryan Ferran, I'm sorry, anyone have any questions? Mr. Ferran.
All right, thank you. We had three Arcadia High School students named as Rose Court finalist, so that's very exciting. So I think it's twenty-eight our finalists from around the area. And then Monday they'll name the final Rose Court. So be thinking positive thoughts for our Arcadia High students. Thursday, Staff Appreciation at the High School starts at four fifteen. We hope to see everyone there, we have lots of amazing raffle prizes. Um, games for the kids, face painting, food, and then the football game, entertainment and all that, so hope to see everyone there. That's my report.
All right, thank you, and that completes our reports.
We will need a motion for Consent Items A through M with Michael.
I move to approve Consent Items A through M.
Thank you, Mrs. Vargo, second, Mrs. Yee, third, all right. Uh, thank you, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, motion carries. Um, Mrs. Vargo, we'll start our board comments with you, since you had inspiration this evening.
Okay, um, so let's see. Let me see the things, I'm gonna go in chronological order. Uh, I attended on the fifteenth, uh, the APISMA, um, workshop, uh, it was a virtual workshop. I don't know if any of you saw that coming your email. It was, uh, about navigating the legal landscape, um, and they talked a little bit about, um, new, uh, uh, situations with immigration enforcement and also with the ethnic studies curriculum. Um, and I noticed that they're also looking for nominations for, for school districts that have done a good job in getting started on the ethnic studies curriculum, I'd love for us to nominate ourselves. And there's a little grant that goes along with that.
We do have a good story.
And I looked through the, the Google form and I didn't know the answer to all of them, so I'll need your help. Okay, um, and then I attended the Council PTA meeting on, uh, the eighteenth and they confirmed the January twenty-sixth reflection ceremony. Um, and, uh, did kind of, uh, s- standard Council PTA actions. Um, uh, I also had the pleasure of attending the Staff Development Day on the Friday. Um, and, uh, really enjoyed doing that because I didn't go last year, I didn't realize that, actually, I was a school board member last year. Um, I, I didn't realize that was something we could attend. So I, I went to the morning, um, and I really appreciated, I went to the, uh, the middle school NTSS data usage, um, uh, workshop. And I appreciated that, um, the First Avenue teachers were so welcoming and allowed me to sit in on their conversations, specifically Mrs. Speed, who's the art teacher, Mrs. Zima, who is the home ec teacher. And then, I can't remember what his name is, um, he teaches industrial tech. They just let me be a fly on the wall and, uh, and had their conversation, so I, I appreciated that. Um, and yeah, I was impressed with, uh, it, with what they were doing. And then, uh, enjoyed the Performing Arts, uh, Foundation, uh, Gala. Uh, really appreciate the whole Performing Arts Foundation Board for everything that they do to put that on every year. And I was so pleased to turn around and see, um, just a, a, a full auditorium. Oh, and I forgot to say, at the, at the Professional Development Day, I saw the picture that you posted, Benton. And just honestly, I didn't look backwards because we were in the front row, but everybody was really happy. There was a lot of smiling faces, so I, I appreciated that you posted that. Um, and then I think that's about it, that's my report.
Thank you. Miss Lynn, would you like to comment?
Um, I don't really have much to say, but I think the facilities update that's been going on, especially like the Hugo Reed Park and how it's like being, like the gate was finished, I feel like it's really nice that like they can control the entrance of like unauthorized individuals and always like considering the safety of like students and staff. I think that's really important. Um, and I also think like, I heard about the new absence like recovery system, I think that's also a good thing that's being like implemented into our school district, cause it's like benefiting the staff and like the teachers and everyone. Yeah, that's it.
Thank you, Mr. Tong.
Um, I, yeah, I really enjoyed the All for One concert, um, held by the Performing Arts Found- Performing Arts Foundation. I think they, they got, had, talked to a lot of people and afterwards and they thought that kind of the nineties era seems to be really popular, a lot of the, the parents, um, of, of that age now, so. Um, hopefully they'll, they'll take that into consideration as they're doing their planning of more, more nineties bands and things like that. But, uh, yeah, we had a great time, my, my wife especially, she got, uh, got autographs, she got pictures with each one of them after the concert. They were so nice, like the entire time, besides, that was the perfect inspiration by the way, but they're, they are so respectful of, um, education, they kept mentioning how important, um, arts education was and the teachers who inspired them when they were young and they, I don't know when they, how long they stayed after the concert was over, but at least like fifteen, twenty minutes, um, by the time we left, they were still there taking pictures, so it was amazing. So, uh, thank you to All for One, thank you for the, to the Performing Arts Foundation for putting that on. We had some fun in the snack shack a couple of weeks ago for the football, football game, so I still encourage, um, maybe, Mr. Estle, to come swing by and take a shift, it's a lot of fun.
Try to serve some Doritos through the window.
Um, and then Athletic Booster, uh, meeting started, uh, last week. And the new, the president this year is Ryona Fujinaga, she's been doing a great job. Um, so, so for, so far this year, they, they're planning out the rest of the year with different, um, kind of educational lectures, uh, to get people to come to the, the Booster Meeting. And their next one, one will be, um, on November twelfth about NCAA eligibility, which is always super, super, uh, popular, uh, for parents to, uh, check out. And then the Booster Dinner will be in March, however, they don't have a date yet, so, but once I find that out, I'll let y'all know. And yeah, I'm looking forward to Staff Appreciation Day coming up. That's all, head of President.
Mrs. Yee?
Uh, yeah, I wanted to just say, it's really great to get the updates on the, uh, facilities at our meetings. Yeah, I wanted to just say, it's really great to get the updates on the facilities at our meetings, just to see the progress. It's kind of exciting, so thank you to Mr. Barrios for the presentation. I agree with everybody, the APAF Gala and Performance was really fun. It was great to see full house, everybody was getting up and dancing, it was a great time. I mean, even my parents enjoyed the gala really much, so I know it's, I was in all the meetings with all the planning and organization, and I know it took a lot of work, so I just want to thank the entire APAF Board and the volunteers that helped out because it, everything was really flawless, I thought it really, they did a great job, so. Their next event is coming up in December, and so I just wanted to put in the plug now, to get your tickets, they are on sale for December fourteenth, their holiday concert with The Letterman. So I went to their last concert at The Letterman, and they were really fun. I mean, I was pleasantly surprised, so I'm looking forward to that concert, so hopefully everybody will be able to come and we can have another full house. For AEF, they are having a financial seminar coming up this Thursday in the NPR at the high school. So if you're interested, it starts at seven o'clock. And it's supposed to be about financial empowering educators and parents and students with the knowledge and tools to make informed financial decisions. So that's just the first of hopefully more to come in terms of different educational parent-student seminars that the AEF really wants to start doing, so it should be informative. And other than that, that's all I have for tonight.
Mr. Hank, sorry.
It's okay, it's okay. Well, first of all, I feel really bad, I missed the gala.
Well, I'm going to miss staff appreciation, so I'm kind of bummed, but.
But I did attend a couple of things, Taste of Arcadia, which was really nice. Lots of great food, lots of drink, good company too, quite a bit of our staff was there, spent some time. It was nice, very nice. Also, once again, Professional Development Day was a great day, I thought that was really well-done, well-attended of course. I appreciated Dr. Van Oostal's opening talk to everybody, especially touching upon just civility, you know, which is something we need to be much more aware of these days in how us as people in education play a big role in terms of showing our students, demonstrates our students as examples of what civility is. So I thought that was, that was huge. I did attend a couple of workshops, they were very informative, really good teaching. Really good stuff, we did it right. That's all I have.
We'll go and then you take us home?
Yeah, sounds good.
I had the opportunity to attend the CTEC meeting, Collaborative Time Advisory Committee, I think is what that stands for. Appreciate all the folks from the different campuses that come together and at the district level too, to review the data, Dr. Mendoza and Dr. Hurish who lead that meeting, and share with us feedback from the folks that have attended those sessions. We, as a district, put a lot of money and time into allowing that collaborative time for our staff, so it's good. It does also kind of like the living document, it's evolving, it's changing due to what's happening and the feedback of our teams, so. That was great, congrats to Homecoming, and lots of pictures online, I'm sure it was fun. And I wanted to shout out the student report and all the information that you guys always bring to us, and I learned today that due to those thunderstorm warnings, they had to totally scramble and redesign all the Homecoming assemblies day of, so kudos, not an easy gig. Of course, the Performing Arts Foundation Gala was great, the thing that resonated with me the most about the evening was the fact that All for One watched our students and then spoke with them, they took that break. And I also loved that one of their band members shared that they had participated as a high school student in Arcadia Festival of Bands as a marcher once upon a time. So you never know how people are tied. The Professional Development Day was outstanding. I now have a little colloquialism that I will use for the future, never play leapfrog with a unicorn. Had not heard that before. But so much of what we do is a unicorn, and it was, I thought it was a really solid way to start the day altogether. I had the privilege of sitting in with the TK teachers for pretty much the whole day through and past lunch and hearing the presentation from the LA County of Education folks that were there to present, got to tour the piloting classroom, really, really listened to the discussions about age-appropriate schooling. And our kids, you know, all our stuff was designed for five and six-year-olds way back in the day, and we are getting kids who have just turned four. And so I am so proud of the efforts of Patty Materia and all the people who have come together to really make sure we're serving our youngest learners in the best way possible. And kudos to the folks that are teaching TK, some veterans, but really appreciated their collaboration and time. And I took lots of pictures, and so maybe we can do an information item about that, the look of that TK classroom, because you will be blown away, it's very cool. Also, just wanted to thank everybody for the reports and the updates. And I didn't know that we paid for so many of our staff to come with that one-time money, but I knew that we had everyone together, so that was something I learned tonight. And I'm wondering how much of a runway we have on that money. Okay, so we're good, we have enough time to figure out how we can keep it moving, because I think that's really important. I think bringing everyone together for a day, it is unique, we're small enough, we can do it, but we are big, so that takes quite a lot of logistical coordination and planning, but it was a really very special day. And with that, I will turn it over to you.
I want to congratulate Arcadia High School, the students and staff for a successful Homecoming dance Saturday night at the Rose Bowl. And of course, the students that were performing as part of the APAF Gala in their Homecoming dresses. The hardest-working kids, you know. And then again, congratulations to the APAF, the Board and everyone that was involved with the setup, the planning. I know it was already mentioned, but I have the privilege of being a liaison, it's kind of seeing behind the scenes, so someone gets to show up and see a beautiful, successful event, but also know what goes on underneath. You know, it's everything from the selection of how to pick the right group that costs the right amount of money, because it is a fundraiser, it's a foundation that's trying to make money, so it's not just, you know, who will everyone like, but at a cost point that you can make a little bit of money and give back to the schools, that everyone's going to enjoy a show, and that it's meaningful to the mission of the Performing Arts Foundation, which is supporting visual performing arts in Arcadia, and that's important as well. And that means sometimes finding acts that are individuals or groups that are willing to do collaborative performances with kids, or, you know, in this instance, just coming out and connecting with our students and the community and sharing what they, you would take the time at the end of the concert to talk about again the significance of how they were inspired from teachers in their middle school and high school, that all plays a part of the selection process. And so when you get it right, it's a really good thing, so congratulations to all of them. The Taste of Arcadia, just want to say thank you as well, we sit on the Chamber of Commerce as a liaison role, and so it's just great to see a successful event that they put on, bringing the community together and under food and drink. How can, what can go wrong, right? The swag, I just also wanted to mention very much like your words, that the swag, the small working Arcadia groups, you know, when we started those years ago, the motivation behind it was the value on collaboration. And at the time, a lot of it was just getting people out of their classrooms and out of their school, specific school sites, and collaborating with teachers across the district. But we also recognize that times change, needs change, and so the real key to that, the swag groups, is that CTEC group that organizes and leads that, they take the feedback, they're constantly asking, listening what's working, and then constantly adapting over the years. So that's been the key to make it ongoing and successful, is that the collaboration has always been there, but the how looks a little different every year, and that doesn't just happen by itself. So people are taking honest feedback, critical feedback sometimes, and making those tiny adjustments. So I'm very proud of that work and that we continue to be able to value that time, so that is my report, thank you.
Thank you so much, Dr. Van Oostal. And with that, I will adjourn our meeting at eight twenty-five, thank you.